Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Monday, October 18th. This is a evening for a regular meeting of Athens City Council. But we're actually going to begin a little bit early tonight with a public hearing regarding the Peach Ridge Road zoning issue for an annexation area. And we're also going to have a finance and personnel committee meeting before the regular meeting. We don't think that meeting will take very long, and we will probably have a few minutes of downtime between these two meetings and our regular meeting at 7:30. But we will begin with our public hearing regarding the zoning designation for the annexation area at the end of Old Peach Ridge Road. I was going to ask Chair of the Planning and Development Committee Christine Fall to speak to it, but she's not here right now, so Mayor Wile, you were at the planning commission?
Okay, we can discuss this, yes. This is, as you said, the old Peach Ridge Road zoning. Essentially, we're going to be zoning that as R1. What you're seeing in 09810, which is really the designation where we decide what to call it. Let's see, where is, where is, where is, where is? Shoot, I don't see where it is in here. It's somewhere in here, right? Actually, accepting the petition for that annexation approximately that much area. This is 9.8 acres. We started this in May, I believe, earlier May, actually earlier than May, in 044 where we started with the annexation procedure. So 04410 was the first one. This one is accepting it, and I believe the designation we're going to be coming in is R1 because the adjacent areas are R1. Actually, 099 is the designation ordinance. So we have two ordinances coming up at us. Really, the only thing you want to know if having questions would be designation of R1, which is single-family housing. It's basically residential units only. This is one big lot. I think the question arose at one time, could it be divided to more than one? There was always a possibility of one to three, I think, was the concern. I think we'd like to keep it as one. We have the utilities there in place. One of the questions, of course, was whether we had enough to interfere with the right-of-way for a reservoir, and it does not. I believe you got a response on that from Ann Stone. And that's all really there is to it. I could add more if I can, if I think there's anything more to say.
Any questions, concerns, if they're expressed to the mayor?
I already expressed to the mayor, but I would like to make sure that the right-of-way stays on the deal. I know it's not necessarily something either of us would do, but it would be good to have it.
Okay, I assume it would. I'll make that mention to the parties.
Sign again, sorry.
Okay. And again, really, the right-of-way right now is the county's until we accept it, and then it'll be ours. Okay, and it's a fairly large right-of-way.
It is.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, we're going to close this public hearing then, and we'll move into a finance and personnel committee meeting. Then I'm going to ask Member Bain to start this off.
There are two items that are on the agenda tonight that are of importance. Actually, I'm going to ask to suspend the rules on those. It's probably, one of them is pretty routine, 10510, you can see in your packet, and that would be a typical annual purchase of reagents needed in our various.
106?
105?
106.
Oh, wait a minute, wrong one, I'm sorry. 106. I was looking, I saw, did I see chlorine?
Chlorine, fluoride, salt.
Yeah, right. All right. Boy, I need to get my eyes.
The other one does have salt in it, too.
Yes, it does. Okay, so inasmuch as, I think it's going to be a bad winter, my argument would be, we really need to have this done before the advertising for purchase of these materials. The materials are going to be coming from various funds. Approximately 300,000 from sewer fund, and some from the water fund, and 65,000 from the street fund. And as you know, we do use salt on the road sometimes, and we also use it to soften the water. And we use the chlorine and fluorine and caustic soda in the water treatment process, and the sulfur dioxide in the wastewater process. We also use chlorine in that as well. So this is pretty much across the board in our utilities that this would be done. We've done this at various times in the year, but I believe the service director wants all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and I hope none of you will have a problem. It's an emergency necessary for preservation, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens to begin advertising on the 24th of November to meet a scheduled bid opening during the week of December 6th. And I'd really like to see Columbia salted, if it's icy out, so therefore, I'm going to hope you'll go along with this, along with every other street that needs salted, although salt is an issue. Anybody have a problem with that?
Mayor?
I believe the number is, the amount appropriated and put through is about the same as last year, right?
Exactly.
So we're not test-cutting any increase.
Okay, well, that's good. I was just thinking about salting the number. Usually, it's gone up immensely at times, but it's good you've been able to hold the line. We're not playing with salt this time, I guess, huh?
No.
Those vendors aren't playing with salt this time.
Nobody trying to cart on the market in salt.
Nope. Speaking of salt, 10510 is an ordinance amending, in the previous ordinance, 6810, which authorized construction of a new salt bin. We actually have been down in that area working on reduction of salt because it's been a long-term process, starting with Harret Square, or no, Harret Avenue improvements, sewer improvements, continuing on to the great big conveyance that holds the salty water and sends it off. The Bryn, what do you call it? Bryn Lagoon? Thank you. I told the mayor the other day, that was the first ordinance I ever sponsored. You should remember it. The Bryn Lagoon, and it has reached its age of repairs. And actually, I believe the service director, the city engineer, came up with a pretty decent price on that, used in-house labor. But the bad news is, when we finally got, as we're moving it down from Harret Avenue to the Bryn Lagoon, to the line that connects it to the river, we stopped at the service garage at the salt area. And at that point, we've incurred an increase in price. And what's going to happen here is something that has evolved. It's been in process approximately three months, and it's due to be finished by the 10th of December. Actually, the mayor promised via his service director that it would be done the 10th of September.
I promised, huh?
Yeah, you promised, because he was notified, and there was a lengthy answer to this. And what's going to happen is, they're going to take, instead of 12 inches of dirt under this area, they're going to go to 24 inches. It's all going to be landfillled. They're going to have to put clay in from a landfill-level clay. They can't just dump the dirt out back, they can't just take dirt out of the community gardens field or something like that. They've got to get a certain kind of dirt to do this. It's got to be clay, and it's got to be landfill clay. One reason, one other thing they're going to do is, they're going to send the materials in the summertime that come off, that come out of this into, excuse me for saying a season at all, I was thinking of something else simultaneously, but they're going to send it to the wastewater plant. Now, I promised, I was going to have Chris say this, because I always get indignant just with the Bryn Lagoon as well. I mean, everybody who's taken beginning environmental science knows that if you put salt into the wastewater plant, it's either in the sludge or in the water that goes out to the river. So I don't know what's being accomplished there, but we have to build the expensive thing to put it in the sewer, in the sanitary sewer. But anyway, it seems like it's changing very quickly, and we promised to take care of this. I'm not sure they really have, that EPA has totally figured out how they're going to permit, but I don't want to wait around to see how they're going to permit. I think it seems like we want to do it. Paula did tell me that we had the last of our sampling, and we were pretty much okay, right?
I haven't heard.
You haven't heard that, Burgess and Niple, so the Rickworth thing will finally be closed.
One more quarter to go.
Yep, and that's it. So there it is. So, and again, it was, it's a process started at Harret Avenue, continuing through the Bryn Lagoon, new lines there, different procedures, all with the goal of doing what? Reducing chloride contamination of our wells. And the EPA picked it up because we acted as good doobies. We went to them and said, hey, by the way, we're in the wellhead protection area, we're going to be doing this, you know, Bryn Lagoon this, and they took an interest in it, and that's why we're taking 12 more inches to the landfill.
And adding more.
Adding 12 more inches, spending more money, and that's where it's going.
So this ordinance is going to authorize changes in expenditure?
Inappropriate, right. And you might think of it as a three-part process, all of it with a goal of reducing chloride contamination. And that's what we've been wanting to do from the beginning of this.
Mayor Wile?
Again, this originally, last year's budget, we were set aside about 150, and started looking at it after the original design, where we had the impermeable clay base and expanding the salt bin. Realized salt bins been kicking around for about five, six years, we knew it needed to be repaired. We just weren't sure whether we'd keep it where it is, moved the entire service garage area out of the wellfield area. We did have a design for trying to intercept anything that comes off the salt bin, large salt bins, everything's underneath it, underneath shelter. Again, so it started with 150 appropriated in last year's budget, we went to 250, as you can see in the crossouts, and now we're up to 390,000, most because of the engineering involved and the sensitivity of the area, so.
And the extra 12 inches, and the extra pipe, and the extra landfill costs.
And hopefully, we can suspend rules on this so we can get it rolling.
That's exactly what, I'm going to see if there are any questions, and we need to suspend the rules to meet the deadline that the mayor promised of the EPA. Via, and it be said, we'll be through the 10th.
This was one of the projects we wanted to do this year.
I wanted to do it 10 years ago. I congratulate you for getting it done now. I mean, you know, I mean, I know it's been a difficult thing, and you know, it's not a.
Maybe if we get it done real early, before we put salt in there, we can have like a roller skate party or something?
I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that we get it done.
Okay.
Because it's a source of pollution that needed to be taken care of.
Okay.
Does anybody have a problem with suspending on this? No?
Just before we adjourn here, to the people who just came in, we had a public hearing, and we're just finishing a committee meeting of the finance and personnel committee to introduce some ordinances that we're going to ask to suspend the rules on during our regular meeting. Our regular meeting begins at 7:30, so we're going to take about a 14-minute break. Relax, we'll be back. Welcome back to Athens City Council. Again, let me explain that we began this evening with a public hearing and a finance and personnel committee meeting that began at 7 o'clock. We took a break so that we could begin our regular meeting at 7:30 as scheduled. So we are now about to begin the regular meeting of Athens City Council for Monday, October 18th, 2010. We have established a quorum with all members of council present. I'm acting as president pro tem, president of council is out of town. In this position, I try to give some leadership to the meeting, but I also vote on all the issues that come before council. So I will be voting along with council members tonight. Let us begin with our communications, and I'll start out by saying that I would like to ask that council accept the auditor's reports for the month of September. They have been placed in the city council office, and they are available for anyone to look at.
Second?
All those in favor of accepting the reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We've accepted the auditor's reports for September. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Let's see, probably just two things. I guess we'll, I have a meeting for the next elected cycle, but I'd like to talk about the street levy. I'd like to thank the messenger for their workup of the short page on Sundays about the street levy. The other one is legal win and vote, is of course, is having their debates and forums coming on. The next one is this Tuesday, 6:30 at the library. I guess it's county commissioners, and the next one after that is the six congressional district candidates, just to keep you informed. Other than that, I'd like to thank the street crew, and everybody who put together the homecoming and cleaned up after homecoming. I feel like it was a good time. Nothing else.
Except we will second that praise for the street crew, keeping the city as clean as possible after an event like that. A lot of, a lot of extra people here, a lot of candy on the street.
All went to my house.
Auditor, get report. We know you do.
If you don't mind. Well, as we've been talking about for weeks, it's time to start our budget conference for next year. I'm here to report your revenue report, and I handed out my report, list of attachments to everyone on council and the mayor. The revenue report I give at this time each year mostly addresses the revenue for the current year, however, those figures give us an idea of what to expect for the next year. I'm happy to say that the revenue budget projections have come in right on target so far this year. We were conservative in that and kept our income tax revenue projections pretty flat, but they have come in, and everyone is keeping under their budget. Income taxes are the main source of revenue for the city, particularly the general fund. Earlier this year, we received a one-time payment that makes our revenue look better than expected, but this is not likely to happen again next year. We received a total of $490,000, of which $307,000 went into the general fund. I've attached a paper that shows how that payment was distributed among the funds that receive income tax revenue. The next attachment shows our actual collections through September and the breakdown by funds minus the one-time payment. While this shows a slightly negative variance, out of nearly $10 million, this is a small difference. It's a negative $160,000. Also, I expect some of that to be made up in the next few weeks as we process tax returns received recently because of the October 15 filing extension deadline. We got about 200 returns in today. And so, of course, hopefully, a lot of those will have checks attached to them, or do have. Next is an attachment showing conservative revenue projections for the general fund and the street funds for 2011. The general fund is where we really keep a close eye on revenue and expenses. We expect to see a decrease in revenue due not only to income tax revenue being flat, but also state funding. We expect the state local government funds will go down 20%, and I would not include any impacted funds in the revenue budget for next year. The tangible personal property tax has already been phasing out this year. On the other hand, court revenue is up based on fines and costs. Now, the good news is that the general fund should have a healthy carryover for next year. Although their budget is fairly high, it appears that we have not been overspending, at least at this point in the year. The next attachment shows the fund balances as of September 30th. A $1.8 million carryover would be 16% of our revenue, or two months of operating expenses in the general fund. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, as a result of our presentation to the bond analysts, I sent a draft debt and cash balances policy to council for approval. I just sent that out late this afternoon, in case you haven't checked your email and are wondering, but I did send it today. 15% is probably the least that we should have for carryover. That's been the recommendation. Fees for services, water, sewer, and garbage. While the revenue has come in as expected, the budgets are very tight in water and sewer. The sewer fund has a little cushion available in the sewer debt fund because of the revenue split instituted a few years ago. I recommend changing that split from 72% to, and 28% to 75-25%. The water fund is tight, needs an annual raise of 3%. The garbage rates are probably good where they are, depending on any changes to service next year. The community center and recreation funds continue to balance their expenditures with their revenue. As I said, even last year, Rich has done a very good job over there. I've also included a debt schedule for next year. We have made a lot of headway in paying down debt since I became auditor in 2004, which I can't really take all the credit, that's just how it's happened. The tip money is used to make payments on the estate street note. The community center bonds are funded by levy, and the EPA litigation note is paid for by the $1 assessment on service charges. The sewer fund will retire one of its OWDA loans next July. As we close out October, November, I will have more accurate figures and continue to update you for the final budgeting process. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? One other thing I might add is, when I talk about the one-time tax payment, we are not allowed to, all tax, income tax information is considered confidential, that's from the ORC, members of my office staff. We face personal fines, large fines, for, you know, saying, naming people's name, you know, who pays taxes, let alone how much. We're not allowed to say the mayor pays his taxes, let alone how much. That's all I'm going to say.
That wasn't my 400.
No, yeah, it wasn't. Big range. You said that, not me. But yeah, so people are very curious about that, but I'm just really legally bound not to say who that is. Any other questions about the report? I didn't really go through all the funds, major funds like last year, because they're all just doing pretty good. Grant funds, you know, the money comes in, it is what it is, we spend, you know, what we get, and so I don't know. No more questions? Okay, thank you.
We will be having discussions about budget as regular portions of our meeting the next several weeks, as well as committee meetings. So budget will be a recurring issue for a while, putting together the budget for 2011. Okay? Other reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Lang?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one brief issue I would like to remind council, and you may have seen it in the paper, that we are set to go to trial on the Palmer Place case next week. Have two days set aside for that trial. It's been, this was actually filed back in 2008, and it's been rescheduled a number of times. It looks like we're actually, the trial date is going to go forward, and so we're certainly looking forward to defending our cat fee ordinance in court next week.
Comments or questions for the law director? We will move on to ordinances for third reading. These are ordinances that we will be voting on this evening. And so we'll start with ordinance 9110, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, I move that adoption of 9110? Second? 9110 will allow the administration to dispose of vehicles that the police, for the police, they have acquired these vehicles in the process of doing their job, and that's what's going to happen. They're pretty old vehicles, not, and so we might check out the auctions in the not-too-distant future if we pass this.
One comment, I believe we've also instituted the opportunity for vehicles such as this to be sent to other municipalities in our area.
In nonprofits also.
Yes, in nonprofits, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we put that language in this particular one, but. Just shake your head now. Yeah, okay.
No? Okay.
I think it goes back to, please, do you have to go to public conversation?
Is that, is that?
Please, project.
Okay.
I was only impressed they weren't in that greatest shape either.
Okay. Vote on ordinance 9110. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Seven oh. Ordinance 9810, an ordinance, ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 9.81 acres on Old Peach Ridge Road, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 9810. This is an ordinance, as the title says, for accepting the annexation of property on Old Peach Ridge Road. This has been on the council's agenda for several months, going through the process that it has to go through, and we also had a public hearing several, a couple months ago on it. It's a pretty straightforward annexation.
All those in favor of ordinance 9810?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ordinance again passes seven zero. Ordinance 9910, an ordinance designating the zone for the Old Peach Ridge Road annexation area. Remember Fall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 9910.
Second?
Now that we've annexed the property on Old Peach Ridge Road, we now have to designate the zone for it. We have had a public hearing upon this, and this is a pretty common process where you annex it, and then it has to be zoned, the proper zoning for it.
And the zoning is?
The zoning is R1.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 9910?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Ordinance 9910 passes seven zero. These are ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 110, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract with the Perfection Group Incorporated for energy-saving improvements to city facilities as authorized by House Bill 420, and authorizing the auditor to borrow up to $300,000 for said improvements, introduced by Councilmember Gosney. Remember Gosney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that we consider ordinance 110 under suspension.
Second?
And the reason for the suspension is, this is for work that will increase the energy efficiency of several city buildings, and if we get that done in time for the winter months, the city will appreciate a substantial amount of savings this year.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 110, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended. Remember Gosney?
Thank you. I move adoption of ordinance 110.
Second?
And we've discussed this ordinance in quite a bit of detail. I'll quickly summarize it here. This is part of comprehensive effort to increase energy efficiency at city facilities. And this particular ordinance covers several different buildings that the city owns and operates, one being the parking garage, which would have a replacement of all the lights in the garage with high-efficiency lighting. Another is the code office building that would include lighting retrofits, programmable thermostats, as well as some building envelope work, such as replacement of windows with double-pane windows. Also, City Hall would have a small amount of work done on windows, and the majority of the work is actually going to be completed at the community center, saving a huge amount of energy at that facility. And that work will include lighting retrofits, as at the other sites, but also heating and cooling equipment, retrofits and replacement, and an upgrade of the controls for the heating and cooling system, as well as some water conservation measures at the community center. The cost of this total project is estimated to be $417,380. And then there will be some financing costs associated with that as well, and some possible, possibly some annual fees associated with that. The estimated savings for this project are $878,000, just a little bit over 878,000 over 15-year period, saving the city roughly $400,000 over that 15-year period.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gosney. Any questions or comments? Mayor?
Will, again, this is part of the first, so to speak, phase. We have other energy efficiencies that can be put into place once we see how these roll out. The idea maybe next year is to look at the Phase 2, which would be another almost 600, 800,000, but there's, you know, the other ones, realize, we're looking at buildings right now that are not going for our operations, with the exception of the parking garage. I believe the parking garage, we're not going to, is part of the, one we're not taking loans on, because we have to hurt money in there. And again, in the long term, it will save us money. The estimate, of course, is predicated on the fact that energy rates do not go up, too. So we, the word is that AP is going to be increasing their rates sooner than later. I'll also mention, since we're talking about AP sometime in near future, I think the 25th, we're talking about having AP come and talk 25th, we're talking about having AP come and talk about power outages on Eastside. So just an aside.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just briefly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank the mayor's office for spearheading this and doing the majority of the work on this, as well as the Finance Committee on Council for making sure we have the resources available to make these upgrades, and our auditor as well. Thank you.
Come on ahead.
I'd like to add, it's not just me alone, it's Ron Lucas, Assistant Service Safety Director, and Paul Dove, the planner, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on this.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance 110, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Ordinance 110 is passed seven to zero. We have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 10310, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for safe routes to school funds and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual ordinance that we pass in City Council as part of a grant program that comes through the Ohio Department of Transportation. And what it does is enables us to construct projects around the city that are near the schools and provide safer routes to schools for schoolchildren. In the past, it's supported things like reconstruction of stairways, sidewalks, also a raised crosswalk area on Morris Avenue this year, and some of you may have remembered that we just passed last year's ordinance, the authorization for that, finishing up last year's project just a few weeks ago. So now we'll be applying in November to the Ohio Department of Transportation for another grant for another project, and this particular ordinance then authorizes us, the Safety Service Director, to be able to do that.
Mayor Lang?
I wasn't... Do we need to suspend on this, since it is... The deadline is November 8th, I think it says?
I think it's November 8th, and our thought was is that the next...
We do second reading?
Second reading. We'll allow one more reading.
Member Paul?
I'd like to point out that this doesn't only benefit schoolchildren, you know, being able to increase walkability to schools, but it increases the safety for all pedestrians. And I think it's a great program, and it's not only paid for specific projects in the city around the schools, but also the initial grant was also to do with planning, a whole planning project, so that it's really helped identify, so it's not just projects, but they're prioritized, and they work with the PTOs and the individual schools to identify needed projects.
Member Bain?
The other thing that I notice quite often when I'm driving down East State Street is that the signage reduces the speed limit, and, you know, instead of just "school zone", you actually have that reminder that this is... I notice people do slow down.
Some flashing lights?
Flashing lights.
Yeah, the flashing lights. Very important, I think, for safety.
Member Gosny?
And so this is an example of, I think, a great example of our successes through the street department. Is there a match for this? Is there local match?
I'm not sure that there is. I know that after the grant program, we're responsible for the maintenance.
Okay. I didn't think there were.
No, there isn't. I think there is. This is a fully funded...
We had to appropriate some additional funds for a project that was not within the guidelines of this program. That's why we had extra money.
So if we have cost overruns or increases, then we do pay for 100% of those over and above the grant.
Okay. We're going to move on to Ordinance 10410, an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider Ordinance 10410 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for this... This is in connection with the community center bond refinancing, and the reason for the suspension is that the bondholder wants everything in place. They're going to have their presentation on Wednesday, so that's the reason for the suspension.
Voting on the suspension of the rules for Ordinance 10410. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Member Kuhn?
I move to adopt Ordinance 10410. This amends the 2010 appropriation ordinance by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $3,309,400 to Community Center Debt Fund 470, Transaction Class 400, and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. And as I said, this is in connection with the community center bond refinancing, which will lower our interest rate and save us a good deal of money.
Yes, it's... We've talked about this, about $300,000 over the next six years for the city. And the reason this large amount is not quite the total amount still owed on the bonds, because we did appropriate... Have some appropriated at the beginning of the year to make our interest and, you know, scheduled payment for the year. 3.8 mil is about... Is what we need, and so this is the balance. And the reason we have to appropriate all of it, even to roll it over into another bond, so it basically gets spent, it'll show up on our expense report also as we roll it over, that we need it all appropriate.
Any... Oh, Mayor Lang?
And again, this was a 16-year bond for building the community center. We're 10 years in, we've got six years left. As discussed before, this way we'll be cutting our interest payments about in half, we hope. As far as the presentation is to look at our ratings, present out what our fiscal situation as compiled by the auditor's office, and hopefully we'll save about 300 in the next six years as results.
So this bond will run for six years?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance 10410, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 104 is passed seven to zero. Ordinance 10510, an ordinance amending Ordinance 1610, authorizing construction of a new salt bin, Project 242, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 10510.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that we have... That the city engineer has made a commitment to finish by the 10th of December, and in order to do that, we need this money released about a year early as soon as possible.
Part of our finance and personnel committee meeting earlier was to talk about the funding of this salt bin, and I think we... Questions were asked and discussions were held, so I think we're ready to vote on suspension at this point. All those in favor of suspending Ordinance 10510, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I move adoption of 10510.
Second.
10510 is part of a program we've been engaging in to reduce the chlorine chloride contamination in the vicinity of the Herod Square, and then the Brine Lagoon, and the Convenance to the Stream, and then finally the new salt bin. A very lengthy and relatively expensive set of processes involved in this. This one, the price went up. I thought it was a bargain when Andy first talked about it, but I'm happy that he forged ahead and got this done. We are... Were required now to add... To take out 12 more inches of soil, landfill, and add clay. That would be clay that would be landfill-quality clay to this area, as well as paving it and sending effluent on the drain to the sewer treatment plant. So it's a worthwhile project. We're on the edge of probably some changes in control by the EPA, and luckily, we're here doing this right now. I'm happy to have it done, so I hope you'll support the passage of this ordinance.
All those in favor... Other questions or comments about this? Again, I think we talked about it quite a bit earlier. All those in favor of Ordinance 10510, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. This ordinance is passed seven to zero. And finally, Ordinance 10610, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider 10610 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The Service Director requested that we pass this under suspension because she would like to begin advertising the week of October 24th, in order to have bid openings December 6th, and so we have a time constraint.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this suspension of the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules on Ordinance 10610, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Okay. Orders... Rules are suspended.
Move adoption of 10610.
Second.
10610 takes money from various funds in order to support this. The mayor pointed out, I didn't even know this, it's about the same as last year, which is good, and we will have the materials ready to go when the new year starts, if we follow the timeline that's been set down. These are basic materials needed for the operation of the wastewater plant, the street department, and let's see, it's renovation in here, and sometimes it is, and the street department wire sewer.
All those in favor of adoption of Ordinance 10610, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Ordinance 10610 is passed. Okay. Announcements and other business. We have... We're going to have a committee meeting... What did we decide was? Next...
25th.
The next week?
AP will be here at 1:00 to talk about the four power outages on the state.
On the 25th?
On the 25th.
Okay. So normally, our committee meetings begin at 7:00. Do we have...
I'd like to have a safety committee meeting, carbon monoxide.
Thank you. We're in the budget process. I'm sure finance and personnel will have something to talk about also, so we'll put this down.
Yes, when we were... When the mayor and I were talking to them, we... To AP, I was thinking all those little goblins are going to be on the street until 7:00 or there above, so we're going to kind of get that out of the way. That's why it's eight, I hope I can schedule it too. Because that's the Halloween.
Right. Next Monday is the children's Uptown Halloween.
Which is great.
It's a great... It's a great event, put on by the Athens Uptown Business Association. We'll go ahead and... Member Bain?
Sure.
We're going to go ahead and begin meeting at 7:00. Okay. That's what I thought you... That's what I thought you meant, but I...
Yeah, no, I was...
Okay. Any other committees think they might?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see how it goes. If you need to get on the agenda, please do. Okay? But we will have representatives from American Electric Power here at 8:00, specifically to talk about some power outages that members... Citizens in the East End in particular have been commenting about. Other announcements? Mayor? Auditor? This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items not covered on our agenda. Anybody? Sir, you want to come up? Remember, you need to introduce yourself, give us your address, and we limit you to three minutes.
My name is Greg Silverman. I'm at 6361 South Blackburn Road.
Thank you.
Tonight, I am coming before you on behalf of the Ohio University Off-Campus Living Office. We would like to, number one, announce that April 22nd, it's a Friday of 2011, we'll be having our second annual Earth Day Green Event called Edge. For those of you who might recall, this past spring, we had our first annual Edge Event, and it was... It was a great time. We had it in between Washington... Or on Washington and between Court and College Street, just right outside this building, and it was both educational and celebratory, and it was a great opportunity for students to come out, for city residents to come out, for families to come, and children. It was just a good time. And to close down the street, Member Nysley and the rest of the Transportation Committee was very gracious, working with us to very hurriedly get an ordinance passed to close the section of that street, so we're trying to work a little bit on the front end of things more this time around. We intend to use something very similar. This year will be... The event will be between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., but we will need the street to be closed from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we are requesting that our first choice of area would be the section of Court Street between Washington and East State. It would be a smaller section of the street, but then the second choice would be where we had it last year. And we will be working with Assistant to the Service Safety Director, Ron Lucas, and other members of the city as is appropriate, to make sure that this event goes down according to code, and leaving the 14-foot gap for the fire lane. And just to give you an idea, we are planning on setting up a small stage for live music and about 25 tables for various vendors to come in and present. I'd be more than happy to field any questions that you have for us at this point.
Would you make sure that you, again, talk to Member Nysley and get on a committee agenda so that you can come talk to us and we'll get all... When everything is decided for sure, as soon as you can, then we'll be ahead of the game.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Mayor?
And you are in contact with Ron, so he has your email address and...
Yes.
Find you.
Yes.
Good enough. But thanks for coming in so early.
Yeah. We really appreciate it.
We're looking at Halloween right now.
Yeah, like I said, last year, we had to suspend rules and everything, so we're returning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on items not covered on our agenda?
Nate Hall, 143 Grosvenor Street. First, I would also like to thank the homecoming cleanup crew. On my walk to class this morning, I did not see a single tootsie roll on Court Street, so good job, guys. I also noticed, while walking this weekend, walking home, I noticed a streetlight on Grosvenor that, you know, was obviously installed on the telephone pole, but it wasn't lit. I don't know if it was broken, or there's no bulb, or what, but this isn't the first time I'd noticed it, so I wanted to bring it to council's attention. Last year, I also lived on Fern, which is a... For those of you who don't know where Fern is, it's a short alley between Court Street and East State, and I had noticed when I lived there, a similar situation of a streetlight installed, but no bulb, but it never came on. There's nothing happening with the light. I'm glad that City Council is reapplying for the state routes... Safe routes to school funds. In a city as walkable as Athens, it's very important that we have safe routes to school for pedestrians and children, but really for everyone. But it's just as important, especially as we move away from the long summer days and sun's going down earlier. It's just as important to have safe routes home, so I just wanted to bring that to council's attention.
Mayor, do you want to talk to me?
Yes, actually, the best method of doing a finding is to put those lights and send them to the service garage, either myself or Andy Stone. The location on the street would be helpful, but actually, if you look on the telephone pole, you're going to see a little aluminum sticker about yay big, and it's got a bunch of diamond holes in it, and each diamond hole corresponds to... It's like your SAT's a number system. That's an X-Y coordinate for that particular light.
Okay.
So that would actually be even much more specific, if you want to record those. Sometimes they're hard to read, especially at night, because I've done it. I've tried looking for these things, and it's like the light's off, broken, and you can't see it. But getting a location, and we perk it up to AP, and they fix it when they can get to it. They do most of the lights. Some of the lights are our own, but the majority of them are theirs, and the faster we tell them about, the faster they can fix it. Okay? Okay? Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing these up. Anybody else? I'm going to declare tonight's meeting adjourned at 8:06. Thank you.